Good afternoon, everyone. This is April the 2nd. This is our Pitt County Board of Education. I like to call it the Order at this time. At this time, I ask Benji Forrest for a pledge allegiance. Everybody stand please.
Stand and pledge allegiance. Behind you Mildred. There you go. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time, I call on Ralph Love.
May we bow our heads in a moment of silence for any situation that's going on in Pitt County. We know that something happened this week and we want to bow our heads in almost submission. Thank you.
Amen. At this time, do I hear the motion for adjustments to agenda?
Second.
And if not, all in favor say aye. Hold expression. Oh, that's right. We didn't do a roll call. Let's go back to a roll call, folks. We're trying to do it the old way. All right, now hit it. We're doing a roll call right now, Jim.
Did you push confirm?
Okay. All right, now let's, have you got that cleared? Second item was the one we just did on the adjustments to the agenda. At this time, I call on Spotlight at Ed and Teaching and Learning, Tom Feller.
Good evening. I am Tom Feller and I work with Race to the Top and Staff Development, so I was asked to give, have an update on the four staff development days that we had this year. As you know, with the waiver days on the calendar, we waived four of the days of the 185 that were required. Those were supposed to be dedicated specifically for staff development on the new standards that are coming out next year with Common Core and Essential Standards. So you should have a handout with this cover. It's just kind of a two-page thing. And if you've got questions, please tell me if I go too fast or anything. But on the second page, you'll see the four, excuse me, the four days that were used for the waiver this year. August 19th was not a waiver day. It was one of the days at the beginning of the year set aside for staff development. We did do like a two-hour activity that day just to introduce everyone to the new standards. But during those days, we focused on a couple of things, really giving the teachers an overview of the standards and helping them understand the process to unpacking the standards so they would understand them. We looked a lot more at really the process and giving teachers the tools they needed so that they could continue learning even when they were not in staff development. So at the bottom there, we have three questions that we asked teachers to answer, and this kind of guided everything that we did. The first question was, as teachers would go through the standards, they had to answer, how will, I know a student has mastered this standard. And then we kind of backwards planned from there. So if we know how, what a student has to do to master the standard, we asked, how do we test that? You know, for example, if we're doing music and the standard says they need to sing, it may be more of a performance assessment. If we're in math, you're not going to do a performance assessment like that. It may be more of a paper and pencil test. It may be multiple choice. So knowing the answer to those two questions kind of guided then, how does the assessment guide my instruction? If you're designing instruction that's going to culminate in a performance task, that's going to look a lot different than if you're designing assessment that may be answered in a writing portfolio or in a traditional paper and pencil test. At the conclusion of all four days of training, we did a survey to just kind of figure out, well, how have we done? Where are we at? And then use that to plan forward into next year. So on the next page, you can see some of the survey results. The first question was, after going through the four days of training this year, I feel more comfortable now than I did in August. And we were hoping that this would be answered positively after sitting through four days, and it was. You'll see 87% of teachers strongly agreed or agreed with that statement. So we felt that that was a good thing. Then we asked them, what was the best part of the process this year? 71% of the teachers said that having time to collaborate in PLCs was a key part of the process this year. Professional learning communities were really teams of teachers that got together, four to six teachers at a time, and they used that time to go through the standards themselves instead of having someone stand up and lecture the whole time. And they felt that having that time to just really sit and work with each other was the best part of the training. Another 17% said that creating lessons or assessments for next year was the best part in their PLCs, particularly the two days in March. Teachers worked in their PLC to plan a lesson that they could use along with the new standards to plan an assessment, just to give them some practical things that they could take away. At the end of the training, they all handed those in to their instructional coaches. Instructional coaches handed them to me, so I've got a database sitting in my email box of hundreds of assessments at this point that we'll go through over the summer with the curriculum review people to kind of see what was, you know, done really well, what kind of got the idea behind the new standards, and then what do we need to tweak. Down below, I'm not going to read all the comments to you, but there's some comments that people added. We had a lot of open-ended things on the survey. The first one there I did want to highlight, it says, I believe, "Learning to Work in My PLC was the best part of the process this year. The PLC is essential to strong teaching." And I think teachers really started to get the impression and the understanding that we were trying to communicate, and that is that you are the experts. The PLC is really, you know, an example of, we're trusting you to figure out what you need to do for the kids. You're the experts. You know how to teach. You need what, you know what needs to be taught, so we're going to give you that time to collaborate. The second one there, again, just piggybacking what I said, it's working to create assessments. The bottom two, again, having time to collaborate for colleagues to sit, discuss, and plan with one another. One teacher said, "We need a monthly designated time with a three-hour minimum with the explicit task of group planning." The second to the last one there, without question, the two days in March. Those, again, those two days in March were spent of six and a half hours, about five and a half hours of that was spent in those PLC teams. If you turn to the last page, the next question we asked was, what was the worst part of the training? Always want to know that because we need to know what not to do, what do we need to fix? The number-one thing that people said was lost time in the classroom for grades and planning. And I think there was just still this misunderstanding at the beginning of the year that when the teacher workdays were taken from them, that we took them, you know, out of, I don't know, I guess malice or something. But it wasn't. I mean, the state said we needed to use these days for students, and then they gave the waiver so that we were allowed to use them for professional development. And so we were not allowed to by the state, use them for planning. What was interesting to me, though, is even though that was the number-one response, still less than one in five actually said that that was, that was the worst part. The number-two answer was that nothing was the worst part. They had a hard time identifying thing, and over 10% said that. We thought that that was a strong, said a lot about the training that went out this year. You can see a couple more on there listed, the other top answers. The comments there, shared, a couple of them. I think the third one from the bottom really kind of hit the nail on the head. Teacher said nothing that could really be avoided. Yes, there were some negative parts of this, but I think the teachers finally understood, at least a lot of them did, that this was something that needed to happen, we had to do, and it may not have always been what they wanted to be doing with their time when the kids were not there, but they recognized that it was important. Again, the very last one, I did not think there was a bad part, except having every single workday be all about this instead of getting to work in my classroom. So those were the things we heard. The next question after that, and this was one of the last questions we asked, is what is the best way to sustain this training over the next 12 months, 12 to 18 months? The number-one answer again was time to meet in PLCs. The comment at the end there, it says, "Continue supporting us." And again, I think that's important, that teachers were understanding that PLCs were not something extra we were putting on their plate. It was something that we were saying here, you're the experts, we believe in you, we know that you can do this, and we're going to give you the time to do it. So that was a really positive comment for us. Again, over one in five said that in order to continue this throughout the next year, they needed time to do that. Online, Staff Development PD 360, should say 360 and not 360, sorry for the typo, that's an online program we have for staff development, and some people said maybe doing some staff online. Basically, just having some time to plan, a little less than 2% of teachers indicated that. And you can see the, the actual raw numbers are listed there in addition to percentages. We had just under 600 respondents. And one thing I do need to say about that, even though we have roughly 2,000 teachers, a lot of the teachers answered these questions and they answered the survey in their group of four to six. So where we only have one answer, you've got four or five people that contributed to that answer. So we felt that the 576 responses was probably the bulk of everyone in the district because they may not have answered it individually. They sat around with four or five and discussed it and figured out how they wanted to go forward with that. The very last thing we asked them was just, again, another open-ended question. Share any comments, concerns, or thoughts you would like for the Race to the Top team to consider. This was an optional question. It was the only optional question, so not everyone answered it. But of those that answered, again, 52% said, "We want time to meet as groups in our PLCs, grade levels, or subject areas, to do PLCs so we can build those common assessments, we can talk about common planning, and we can support each other." About one-third said, "Just give me more time in my classroom. I need to get my grades done." And then the other 25% was just kind of a conglomeration of all sorts of things. No one, one thing stood out. So I want to close this then, looking at the very bottom there, on what are our next steps as we go forward in terms of Race to the Top and Staff Development for next year? In June, we'll have teams get together that will develop the new curriculum guides for K-12. That will actually be done by the curriculum people, and I'll be assisting with that. We'll have instructional coaches facilitate that. We will pay teachers their daily rate of pay. We'll contract them for up to two weeks in June. We're working out the exact number of days. That'll be paid for on a Race to the Top. But we'll have new guides, K-12, and every subject area is the goal. During the month of July, we will work on publishing those guides online. Part of the process of developing them with the new standards, there's a big emphasis on integration of technology and media and literacy. So after the guides are created by the teachers, then they'll be passed over to the media and the instructional technology folks. They'll go through it, and they'll embed suggestions and strategies into it so the teachers know, how can I use the resources in my media center? How can I use the technology resources we have? So the month of July, I'll take care of that, and then we'll publish those onto the website in some kind of electronic format. In August, we'll do kickoff training at Curriculum Summer Institute. Excuse me. That'll be the week teachers come back, Monday through Thursday, are not workdays. Teachers can come back. We had over 500 people at that institute last year. We're expecting just as many this year, especially since we'll be rolling out these new guides. Sessions will be like, you know, what does a first-grade classroom look like with the new standards? And so we'll do all that training there. And then ongoing, just, they're even starting now and will continue through the year, we're working with principals at the principal meetings on how to do, how to schedule time into the day so the teachers have that time that they're asking for, both for PLC and working on their plans. District-level PLC days, we're working with the Calendar Committee to try and figure out what days during the year can we use for district PLCs. And the reason district PLCs are important is it's one thing for a school to say, okay, you know, this day is for PLCs, get in your groups. But remember, a PLC is four to six people. If I'm the only music teacher, there's no one for me to meet with. Now, the obvious ones there are the encore's music, P-E-R, but when you think about a middle school, I'm the only Algebra I teacher. So we need to have a way for that Algebra I teacher to network and work with the Algebra I teachers from the other schools. So one of the things they did this year, because the days were district days, is the principals and the teachers kind of figured out, okay, here's the school closest to me, here's the teacher that, you know, I'm comfortable working with. And they designed these district-level PLCs so that they could work together, and they would move around the county as needed. And that was a very positive thing. But we need to have that time set aside at the district level so that if one school's doing staff development and another school's doing PLCs, well, obviously, your PLC can't meet because half your people are out. So we're working with Calendar people to do that. The next thing is the design of common formative assessments. Formative assessments are really designed to help us know not only what students are doing, but also, how am I doing as a teacher? And so by designing an assessment that's the same for everyone in the grade level, they can look at that, and the teachers can look at it. Wintergreen has been doing it this year already, and they've had some really amazing results in terms of what teachers are realizing. One of the teachers made the comment that, you know, "I thought I was the best math teacher there was in the fourth grade, and I realized someone else taught this standard better than I did." And so I went and asked her, "How did you do it?" And they were able to grow together and get better. So that was, that was a good thing. Finally, we're working on putting together an online resource clearinghouse. That'll be where the pacing guides are housed, the curriculum guides, and also some lesson plans and formative assessment ideas. Having said all that, any questions that I can answer?
I can say, back on the second page, those three questions are very important in the instructional process. Your survey, if you had taken that survey at the very beginning of the staff development, it would have been the other way around. It would have been very negative, because I heard from a lot of teachers. What the staff did is took something that was negative and turned it into something that was positive in the way that you implemented it. Because teachers do, the ones that I've heard from lately, do feel better about the standards, the core standards, and how to implement them. And I also think it's going to be very important that with the new standards, that you look at those assessments and be sure that those assessments are in line with those core standards. And those teachers need time to meet, and it's clear throughout this presentation that they need that next-year time to meet, and that the new guidelines are published and that you have those district-level PLC days. Because some of the smaller schools, especially, you got one teacher. And during that day, they don't really do anything. So they need to have somebody that they can talk with and bounce their suggestions on whatever we. And the common grade testing, to me, is a very strong item that needs to be used because the very teacher that does think that they're the strongest in that curriculum, you'll find out that there could be a teacher that's only been teaching three to four, three years ends up with the high scores. And this is a good way, without the administrator going in there and telling them, that they see it for themselves. And when they see it for themselves, that helps them change, because they do want to have the high scores. So thank you.
Anybody else have any questions?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
On the last page, it says like the next steps. It's like in June, they said with the new curriculum, you said that those ones that will be teaching this will be paid teachers throughout the county. Will that be the same one used for the training in August? Or will others have an opportunity to earn that extra money?
Well, the training in August, anyone can come to the training in August. Preference would be that the teachers who actually developed the guides would be the ones who train on how to use the guides, because they'll have the deepest understanding of it. Now, if none of them are available, then we would go beyond that. But the goal would be, if, if I'm going to write the guide for first grade, that I should be the one presenting it, because I'm going to know it better, and I'm going to be able to answer those questions.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else? If not, thank you, Tom. At this time, do I hear emotional consent items? I got a motion to second. Any discussion? If not, let's vote. At this time, I call on Ralph Love for Human Resources Committee.
One minute. No, Mr. Chair. There we go. Ralph Love, Human Resources. Ms. Jackson is not here tonight. At our last meeting, very chaired meeting, so I'm going to ask Mary to bring us a report from the meeting.
Thank you, Bishop. This is Chair. The talking points from the Human Resources meeting, which took place on March 22, 2012. The Human Resources Committee met on Tuesday, March 23. During the meeting, we discussed several policy updates as well as other information. First of all, we revisited Policy 7.028, the dismissal of classified personnel, I mean, classified employees based on feedback from the Policy Committee meeting that was held in January. It was discussed and determined that a smaller window was needed for the superintendent to move an employee from suspension with pay to suspension without pay. Additional language will be added to specify situations in which employees would immediately move to suspension without pay. The language will be developed through a collaborative effort by Ms. Jackson, Mr. Glennbug, and Mr. Rob Sonnenberry. Second item discussed was the employee compensation policy. Was reviewed regarding administrative salaries. It was determined that the status quo would be applied based on duties and responsibilities when administrative salary changes occurred, based upon a decision beyond the control of the administrator. Third thing we discussed was, we also discussed the need to open, for open contracts for hard-to-feel positions, such as for exceptional children's, in exceptional children's area. Approval was granted and was given contracts based upon available vacancies within the district. This process will be monitored by the Human Resources Department and the Educational Programs and Services Department. Discussion was also had regarding the approval of an incentive program for Winkle Middle School. Ms. Jackson and Dr. Emery shared the need for a different approach to assist the principal with recruitment and retention. The committee approved the development of the incentive program. Thirdly, and lastly, we reviewed the process of non-renewal that would be occurring over the next couple of months. We reviewed the policy as well as criteria and paperwork that would be utilized in the process. Any questions?
I got one.
Yes, Worth.
In regards to suspension, when you suspend an employee, what determines whether you suspend them without pay or with pay?
That was part of the discussion here. And some of that is...
Because it's costing the system.
Yes. And I think that the issue is that we're looking for some language here, that where we have fairly conclusive evidence that someone is in the wrong or guilty, that we can more quickly move to suspension without pay. So for example, if I'm in a bus accident and I have the mandatory drug test and it comes back positive...
I mean, you can go ahead and move with it.
Exactly, yes. But we discussed some of those scenarios like...
Waiting for, I'm sorry, Dr. Emery, but we were also like, if we needed to wait on paperwork from the Sheriff's Department or the Police Department during the investigation...
They would have paid, but once you received the paperwork and it was in a negative format, they would...
It would be without pay.
Without pay.
Yes. So it's not like they'll be out for six weeks automatically.
Because sometime, I am glad that that's been taken up, because we've had some people that have been out for a long period of time, and we've been paying them.
Yes.
And then we end up letting them go, and now we can save the system some money.
Yes. Any other questions?
Thank you, Mary. At this time, I call on Benji, Finance Committee.
Mr. Chairman, we met as a committee on Thursday, March 22, at 5:00. We did not have a quorum, but we did have some, some great discussion and centered around our proposed local budget, projected budget reductions. And we've got one other item that we will be bringing for the full board tonight to take into consideration. And at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Michael for leading the discussion.
Good evening. I'm going to have two items to, to talk about tonight with concerns to the budget plan that's been done thus far. It centers around the 2012-13 proposed local budget, as well as just overall budget planning for next fiscal year as well, which really changed the both state and local funding combined. At your seat, I have a handout that I'm going to walk through, and it's also on the computer screen right here, so we can, you can view it as well. First of all, we'll start with the 2012-13 proposed local budget. And there are two components of the proposed local budget, the operating budget and the capital budget. First of all, with concerns to the operating budget, the proposed operating budget stands at approximately $35,278,912. Those are revenues to be collected to operate our overall local operating budget. As you see, the vast majority of those operating revenues come in the form of county appropriations, making up almost 97 out of every $100 worth of local operating revenue. County appropriations are proposed at $34,126,642. We turn to the, the next, next slide. What I've done here is I've done a, prepared an overall reconciliation of the overall county appropriations from this year to next year. If you look at our current 2011-12 county appropriations, it stands at $34,126,642. That is before any reduction that occurred this fiscal year with concerns to appropriations. As you recall, a couple of months ago, the county reduced our overall local appropriations by $387,000. This is before any mid-year reduction that occurred this year. Overall, I'm projecting fixed cost increases of approximately $367,700 for next year. This is coming from projected increases in the cost of retirement, hospitalization, and overall liability insurance. Now routinely, what we would do, the board would approve a proposed operating, local operating budget that would include an increase in county appropriations to cover the fixed cost increases. And that would be sent to the county commissioners and asked for approval, and also to honor a requested increase to fund those fixed cost increases. But that's not the case with this budget that is proposed before you. Local redirections have been made within the operating budget to offset the fixed cost increases. For example, of that $367,000, $200,000 worth of savings is projected from the second year of the change in the teacher supplement, where teachers do not earn supplement until they earn tenure with Pitt County Schools. Other redirections have been made within the budget to come to the $367,000. So the county appropriations that are being proposed is the status quo. There's no projected increase, and there's no projected decrease in the current level of county appropriations to fund operations that we began the year with. If you look at the fixed cost increases, again, inflationary type increases, we see this year after year. The retirement rate increasing 9.07% from 13.12 to 14.31%. A $261 increase in employer-paid health insurance, going from $4,931 to over $5,192. And then increases in our liability insurance. And this is everything from workers' compensation to unemployment costs, property insurance, general liability, vehicle. A modest $115,000 has been budgeted there to cover those projected increases. You do not see increases in utility costs, which on inflationary basis increase between 4% and 5% each year. What we're doing is we're hoping we can use the mild winter savings that we've received this, this winter, and also to use some efficiencies that we've gained within that area to offset any budget reduction for the next year. So $367,700 just to maintain the current level of operations. Again, this cost is not being requested to the county commissioners as an increase in appropriations for next year. If we take a look at our operating expense budget by line item, we can see the areas that make up the $35.2 million local operating budget. The vast majority of that budget is coming in the form of the cost to operate the facilities, facility operations, utilities, fuel facilities, liability insurance. But just as we've always seen with our local operating budget as well, we have over 48% of the local operating budget dedicated to instructional programs, instructional services. This is 48% of the local operating budget that is directly within the classroom in the form of teacher salaries, teacher assistance, teacher supplements, instructional supplies, technology, and so on.
How about the $200,000 for charter schools? Why, I mean, that has to be designated for a charter school. It just has to be kept out.
That's, that's right, because we basically owe the pupil funding for our students that live in Pitt County that reside at a charter school outside of the county.
So we just keep that money up.
There you go. There you go, that's right. And that is assuming, projecting the status quo. Uh, we all know the, the cap on the charter schools has been lifted, and there is the potential that that could impact us down the road, but we have not projected within this budget an increase in those number of students because there's no way of projecting that at this point in time.
It is a good point that that's only the local...
Yeah.
...portion, so the taxpayer needs to also understand the state portion goes directly to the charter school and doesn't flow through.
Through the school system.
Oh, my gracious, our county, I mean, our state allotments, well, the way the state does it is they reduce our allotments at the beginning of the year based off of projected enrollment into charter schools. That could be anywhere between four or five hundred thousand dollars. But towards the, uh, the middle of the fiscal year, after month three or four, the state will come back and adjust those to actual, based off of actual enrollment. So routinely, what we see is a, a major reduction in our allotments. I don't say a major, a good four or five hundred thousand dollars, but we do see money come back routinely because the numbers don't end up being quite as high as was projected by the state originally. Same goes for our allotment as well. The state projects our allotment, and then if our, it does not come to fruition, they will come and adjust our allocations as well.
Has it gone up over the last three years?
The county, the county appropriations funding charter schools? Uh, well, you know, that's a, basically a direct relation to how much we get funded from the county. So it hasn't gone up substantially, but I can tell you that it's about fourteen hundred dollars per student. So every student that goes to a charter school, we're looking at about fourteen hundred dollars worth of local appropriations. And then again, the, the state appropriations is probably about four, about five, six thousand dollars for each one of the students as well.
Thank you.
So in summary, with concerns to the operating budget, no requested increase in county appropriations is built into the budget. Redirections have been made to the budget to offset the unfunded fixed cost increases. It's worth noting that any additional local budget reductions will be dependent on the outcome of the county budget, i.e. meaning revenue neutral versus non-revenue neutral or somewhere in between. And finally, it's also important to note that significant reductions in county appropriations used to fund operations could cause Pitt County Schools to lose low wealth allotment. And this is something that I know I've talked about a lot, and I'll, I'll dream about this at night, the low wealth allotment, but, um, it really is very important to Pitt County Schools, the, the five point four million dollars that we're projected to receive in low wealth allocations from the state next year. And there's a direct correlation between local county appropriation funding and our ability to receive that funding from the state, given our status as a low wealth county. And I'll talk about that a little bit more here in a second. With concerns to the capital budget, the capital budget is just a reflection of the budget that was approved by the Operations Committee over the last couple of months. It includes projects that will be funded both with county appropriations, appropriations we receive to fund capital projects, as well as Article forty, forty-two sales tax, which are sales tax dollars that were dedicated by the state to fund capital projects. And there's a list of the projects that were included, or approved by the Operations Committee. To summarize the, the capital budget, the level of capital projects that we will be able to fund with this, this funding sources will again be based off the county appropriations for two thousand twelve thirteen. If the county does not go revenue neutral, the county appropriations dedicated to capital could be reduced to zero, that's around seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. We've talked about this, especially in the Finance Committee over the last several months, that our main focus has been to protect county appropriations used to fund operations first. That has been our main focus. So as you look at this, on this budget, again, I can't stress enough that our ability to fund capital projects will hinge on, on the level of appropriations we get from the county, both from operations and for capital.
Well, in the county appropriations, Benji, will your committee, if there has, has to be cutbacks in this area that he's talking about, like athletic equity allocation, painting and so forth, will the Finance Committee, will they make a decision on where that cutback is? Or will the central staff do that?
Michael will make a recommendation back to us. We'll be, at that time, then we'll make a look at it.
So that decision will not be made without the Finance Committee knowing about it?
Overall, the, the, everything that you see here is a proposed basis...
See, I just wanna make sure, because last year, there were a few things that maybe slipped by that I didn't, and that's why I'm asking questions.
But Michael, I think, I think what's really important, and you're asking important questions, but I think what's really important is that we're setting the table here that if there are significant reductions in our county local budget, we're already on record as we prefer them to come from capital first, because what we, what we, what we take from capital does not affect that low wealth formula. If we were to take a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar reduction in operational, that directly impacts...
Correct.
...our low wealth funding. So our preference, we can tell you, and of course, you would be the, the group that would approve it, but our preference going forward would be if there is a reduction, while that would hurt, that it would come from there first so as not to compromise our low wealth funding.
And I'm gonna get ready to go into that here in a second. So that in a nutshell is the proposed local budget for next year. And it, we have until the second meeting here in April to actually approve that. It could be approved tonight, but ultimately would have to be approved by the next, next meeting in order to take forward to the county commissioners. There's not another April meeting?
Are there any questions, Michael?
So I reckon if you would like to entertain a motion to approve the...
Well, I don't think we need a motion to approve tonight on this, do we?
Well, we have to take it, I believe the, I believe the date to the, the county is April, uh, May fifteenth. So I mean, we could, we could give it for the first May meeting.
Let's, let's, let's hold off on the motion.
The next conversation has to deal with overall budget planning for two thousand twelve thirteen, which includes both state and local appropriations. It becomes more and more difficult to, um, to project the next year's operations of both state and local with concern, when you have so many different types of budget scenarios that are going on, but I'll do my best to walk through as easy as I can think of, try to explain where we are in this process, and this is information that's already been shared with our principals as well as we discussed at the last Finance Committee meeting. The first item has to do with the state discretionary reduction. Uh, for this current fiscal year, our discretionary, state discretionary reduction was approximately six point eight million dollars. That is increasing by one million, one hundred seventy-eight thousand dollars for next year, meaning that we'll be sending back to the state approximately eight million dollars worth of state appropriations. Now, if we recall, what is that a state discretionary reduction? Basically, this is a reduction which represents a state budget cut, where each school system must send back allotments to the state. The burden of making that determination of where the reductions come from is basically passed down to the local LEA to, again, make the hard decisions. For example, to cover the state discretionary reduction, just a portion of the, of the reduction, Pitt County Schools would have to send back approximately sixty point five state allotted teacher positions next fiscal year. However, Pitt County Schools would use allotments such as the state low wealth allocation to fund approximately fifty-three point seven five of those sixty positions. So basically, we're sending back state allotted positions but using low wealth dollars to cover the overall budget reduction. When I received the, the state planning allotments, one of the first things that hit me was the, was the state low wealth and my, my good friend, the low wealth allocation. After I picked myself up off the floor, I saw that it was scheduled to reduce by six hundred seventy-two, seventy-two thousand dollars. And again, the low wealth allotment is used extensively to fund teaching positions. And I went through the state low wealth formula, and this is what I was able to come up with as, as to why it was reducing. The low wealth allocation is based primarily on our wealth percentage, and there's all kinds of different criteria used to calculate that wealth percentage. Property taxes, the per capita income of residents of Pitt County, but ultimately, it comes down to a calculation of a number that allows you to be eligible for low wealth funding. That's the wealth percentage. And our wealth percentage for two thousand twelve thirteen is scheduled to increase by one point seven percent, going from eighty-four point eight eight percent to eighty-six point three oh percent. In a nutshell, what that means is an increase in wealth percentage means we are a wealthier county relative to other counties. I try to justify this in my head that if I was, if you're a county and your wealth percentage is a hundred and two percent or ninety-five percent, and based off the economic impact that has hit your county over the last several years, reduction in jobs, foreclosures, everything that goes into the economic impact on the local county, your wealth percentage could reduce from a hundred and two to ninety-nine percent, meaning you're now eligible to receive funding. Or your wealth percentage could reduce from ninety-five percent down to ninety-three percent, which again means you were eligible to receive funding, now you're eligible to receive more funding. Well, relative to all other counties, our wealth percentage has increased, which means our level of funding through the low wealth formula would reduce, all things held constant. So what I tried to do is just give you an indication of how important the low wealth formula is to us and the level of funding that we get, and how it's able, we are able to help fund additional teaching staff, not only fund additional teaching staff, but to cover our current discretionary reduction. This is a, a summary of the teacher positions that are funded with state low wealth and local appropriations. Basically, between the two allotment categories, state low wealth and local, we're able to fund approximately a hundred and sixty-eight teacher positions with those two sources of funding. And as you can see, the vast majority of that is coming from state low wealth. Hundred and twenty-six out of the hundred and sixty-eight positions, supplemental positions we're funding with low wealth dollars. If I break that down by category, basically, what I'm showing you here is the fact that we are funding with low wealth approximately a hundred and fourteen point four positions above the state allotment formula. Another way of saying that is we're funding a hundred and fourteen point four positions more than the straight state allotment formulas allow for. For example, we're funding an additional forty-seven point six five teacher positions above the straight state allotment formula, ten point five AG positions, seven CTE positions, right on down the line, forty-three EC positions. We are dependent on that low wealth funding primarily to fund positions above the state allotment formula. Ever since I've been here over eight years, that has been the case. We've received low wealth and we've used it not, to truly supplement the state allotment formulas and staff above the state allotment formulas. However, given the budget reductions over the last several years, we've started to have to use sources such as the state low wealth formula, low wealth allocations to fund the discretionary reduction. And this has to do with the management of the budget, because we can rescind back a position to the state at fifty-five thousand dollars, but, to cover discretionary reduction, but pay a position out of low wealth that it may only cost us forty-five to fifty thousand because we pay the highest paid positions out of state appropriations. So in essence, we're using the state low wealth formula and a portion of local to fund not only positions above the state allotment formula, but also to offset discretionary reduction. I try to think of an easy way to explain this, and, and a simple, very simple way, but if you look at the fact that if low wealth can fund approximately a hundred and twenty-six point eight seven positions next year, based off of the projected allocation, and first and foremost, if that's used to cover the positions above the state allotment to supplement the state allotment formulas, that would leave twelve point four seven positions that are discretionary reduction positions that we're funding with low wealth. At the very bottom, the other forty-one point two nine would be coming from local appropriations. So, what does that mean?
Yeah, that's what I...
That's a lot of, that's a lot of numbers, but, so I've tried to break it down for you in, in just plain, simple, easy-to-understand English here. It is very well possible if Pitt County Schools loses low wealth, Pitt County Schools would not be able to fund any positions above the state allotment formula, and we'd have to cut additional positions, discretionary reduction positions that are currently being funded with low wealth. This would actually put Pitt County Schools below the state allotment formula in some allotment categories, determining, depending on where those reductions were to be taken. Now, I've talked about in the past that to go from eighty-six percent to over a hundred percent low wealth percentage in one year is not likely to happen. Yes, we could see it start to creep up, but we can manage a, a, a formula allotment category that tending, is tending to creep up. It'd be difficult, we'd see reductions, but we can manage that if our low wealth percentage continues to increase. But what concerns me and us, because it should concern you, is if our county appropriations reduce by a significant amount, this low wealth is tied to county appropriations and the ability of the county to fund our school allocations, our local county appropriations. So that transitions us into the next conversation, which is the county budget. What kind of impact are we projecting from the county budget? Now, I'm just saying, this is Michael's numbers. This is something I, I picked, tried to, to look at the county budget objectively and make a determination of what could we be looking at with concerns to a reduction in county appropriations. This is all based upon the, the scenario, the premise, that the property tax rate is not adjusted to revenue neutral. Again, I would hope that this would be a worst-case scenario, but a, a, a case scenario that I hope does not come to fruition. First of all, the county budget for this fiscal year was approximately a hundred and seven point three million dollars. And if you look at what percentage Pitt County Schools makes up of that total, with concerns to appropriations for operations and capital, Pitt County Schools makes up approximately thirty-two point eight percent of the total county budget. So if the county is projecting a four point nine million dollar shortfall next year, if you apply that percentage, we could theoretically be looking at a reduction in county appropriations of about one point six million dollars next year, coming from either capital or operations. Well, we talked about earlier, our number one priority had been to protect operations, and Dr. Reed put it best with concerns to how, trying to make sure that we protect our, not only our local operation, operating dollars, but also our state low wealth operating dollars. So in this scenario, the bottom part of this slide, basically what I've, I've projected here is that if we got a one point six million dollar reduction and we took five hundred thousand of that from capital, we'd still be looking at a reduction in local county appropriations used to fund, uh, county appropriations used to fund operations of about one point one million dollars. A one point one million dollar reduction in our appropriations from the county to fund operations. Again, trying to put this, well, what does that mean? At the very bottom here, I've got, and it's kind of small, so I'll read it to you. "Based on the state low wealth formula, a reduction in county appropriations used to fund operations of more than one million will put PCS at great risk of losing the state low wealth allotment." I'm not saying we would lose it, I'm not saying that, but I'm trying to project worst-case scenario. It would tighten up that formula much more so than it is right now. A reduction in county appropriations of greater than a million dollars would make it much, much more difficult to be able to, in the long run, hang on to that. And I'm not saying we can't, but it would just make it more difficult. So that's why we gotta look at all options here with concerns to our budget, and that's why we looked at the first, first dollar of any reduction coming from the capital side of the equation. So to try to start to summarize this, and, again, this is the kind of conversations that we had with our school administrators last week when we presented the preliminary allotments. But basically, what we're looking at here is a reduction in state allotments of potentially one point eight million dollars, and local appropriations, again, to fund operations of about one point four million dollars, one million, four hundred seventy-four thousand. That takes into consideration a reduction in current appropriations plus the fixed cost increases for next year that we have to cover. In total, we're looking at somewhere in there, this scenario, again, we gotta remember, this is still early in the, in the, in the, in the process, but we would be looking in this scenario, a reduction of about three point three million dollars in state and local appropriations. Trying to, to say what if, and if we had to use one-time funding in order to help balance the budget, we could be looking at still having a budget shortfall of around two million dollars. This would be using dollars that we have left over, projected to have left over in the federal education jobs bill fund, projecting a balance there of about five hundred thousand dollars at the end of the year, plus one-time local money that has, that came to fruition, came from savings that we saw, were able to, I realized, through use of the education jobs bill funding, that would be approximately one million, two hundred fifty thousand dollars. But still, that would leave two million dollars left to cut in next year's budget. That was a scenario that was presented to the, uh, to the school administrators, and these were the areas that were, that were, were targeted basically in the planning process. And it basically touches all aspects of the school system. We've got classroom teacher reductions, central clerical custodial, almost a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The central office, the non-school allocations of the central office, about three hundred fifty-seven thousand dollar reduction. Teacher assistance, three hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. Reduction in our state remediation allotments, three hundred and four thousand dollars. Instructional supplies, almost three hundred thousand dollars. State textbooks, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Teacher supplements, this is the savings from the second year of the change in the teacher supplement, um, policy. teacher supplement policy, facility service reductions, reducing the fixed cost increases, other miscellaneous reductions, so, kind of gave out a gas at that, at that point, I've still got about four-thousand-nine-hundred-and-ninety dollars more to go in this planning process. But that is the reality here that we're looking at, if this, if this budget scenario comes to be. And this is, this is considering reductions at the state level, discretionary reduction, low wealth, as well as the county appropriations being reduced significantly. In the process of planning the budget, the allotments that have been given to the schools calls for a reduction of about twenty-seven-point-two-six positions at this point in time. And it's coming from regular teacher allotments, clerical, custodial, and teacher assistants. The focus has been to protect the, the teaching staff within the classrooms as much as possible. That's not only regular teachers, but E.C., C.T.E., A.G., L.E.P. Matter of fact, if you look at this budget reduction scenario that's been given to the schools, the vast majority of the teacher reductions are just from positions that have been held back, that we're not allotting yet, because we need to make sure that our ADM comes in at the level that the state projected. We don't want to allot positions out to the schools based off a, a projected amount of ADM, and then that not come to be, and we have to send positions back, just like we were talking about with the charter schools. We project one level of students, and something different occurs, and we, we don't have to do that. So that is where we are at. In summary, there are many unknowns still left at this point, changes made during the state short session, there more than likely will be some changes that occur, and I don't know how that will impact us until we start hearing more information come out of the state level. Outcome of the Pitt County budget process, whether that be revenue neutral, not revenue neutral, or somewhere in between. Again, our projected average daily membership, we usually have to wait till the first twenty days to get an idea of what that might be. Election-year impact, but we must start making plans now. We met with school administrators to present the budget overview, much of the same information that's presented to you here tonight. Schools have been given preliminary allotments. Our goal is to stick with a conservative approach, what I like to call is a worst-case scenario approach, that has paid dividends to us in the past. The finance committee, again, is also looking for areas that we can try to offset, mitigate some of the budget reductions that are included in the handout that you have here. Matter of fact, at the, the finance committee meeting that we had, the, the members that attended discussed a scenario that we look at, trying to roll out a cost savings idea to the staff, and ask for suggestions from our staff, because our staff are the ones that see it every day. They maybe can be a good indication of where savings can come from that would help to, to save positions, to help save jobs. So the finance committee asked that, bring that to the board, and to, to throw out the idea of looking at some type of incentive-based structure where we could provide, and, and incent back to employees that come up with cost-saving measures that are actually implemented and put into operation to help offset state and local budget reductions for the next fiscal year.
Any questions?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I did want to move forward, if, if the board doesn't have any other questions for Michael on the actual budget. I do, I would like to move forward with the employee incentive proposal. When you're ready to entertain a motion, or otherwise to authorize Michael to put together a plan and bring it back to us for a, for a formal motion. I'd rather do it that way.
Yeah.
Yes.
I, I ask you, as chairman, to, to authorize him to do so.
Okay. Jill?
I do have a question about Michael's presentation. Are we making every effort to educate the county leadership about the low wealth funding?
Yes, both Dr. Emery and myself. I would characterize it as candid conversations about the impact of the low wealth formula, yes.
With Mr. Elliott, or with commissioners?
Well, our conversations have been with Mr. Elliott, as well as the finance officer, Melanie. But I have not had any other conversations with county commissioners, no.
If there's some way for us to communicate that, I think it's so important, because, you know, over and over again, if, if, if there's a bigger amount of money at risk or at stake, you find the money to access that money. And it seems to me that this is a situation where they need to find some money so we don't lose five-million dollars. And I just, anything we can do to communicate that, I think is really important. It's like the reverse of a matching grant. I mean, you know, you come up with money all the time on a matching grant because you don't want to let that money go. Well, we're at risk of letting five-million dollars go, that this county could be spending on its children. Maybe it's up to us to make that communication with the commissioners, I don't know, but I think it's really important to make sure they understand this.
We are scheduled to do our quarterly report to them on April sixteenth, and perhaps Michael and I could use our time on their agenda to just not, not make a budget pitch, but explain the, the relationship, and use an example to share how, you know-
I mean, it's five-million dollars out of the county's pocket. I mean, if we lose that-
It comes away, exactly, exactly.
Anybody else got a question? Michael, if you could bring a proposal back for that, what Benji was talking about, it would be nice. In the next-
I will, next finance committee meeting?
I'd like for you to have it ready, if you could, Michael, I know it's a busy time.
No, next finance committee meeting?
For the next meeting, yeah.
Okay, thank you, Michael, thank you, Benji. At this time, we're going to discuss regards of changes to committee meeting schedule. I've had several board members ask that we start doing them prior to the board meeting. And what you got before you right now is a May, I talked to Dr. Emery about this, and, you know, in the past, we have done some combining meetings together. If you look at May the seventh, at your sheet here, we got finance and H.R. as a combined. We could start at four-thirty, we could do two at each meeting, and we could get all the committee meetings, and then that'd be the only time you would have to come up to central office to do committee meetings, it'd be twice a month, two hours prior to each board meeting, and we would have snacks, you know, in our mission. Is any discussion about this, or anybody got any suggestions?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm very uncomfortable with this plan, because I think we've all seen what happens when we're at a board meeting for two, three, four hours. By the time we get to what may be a critical part of our agenda of the board meeting, we're all exhausted. And now you're adding another two hours prior to the board meeting, so we're looking at the potential of many, many hours of thoughtful discussion, and at some point, I just think you start to lose effectiveness when you, when you go on for too many hours.
And I was wondering, when I looked at this and saw it was on the agenda, how would we do any board training, you have to get our hours if we did that? Would there be time, you know, is there any time left to be able to do that for all of us? Because that's been very effective, I, I thought it was very effective for all of us.
We've just had to do special, like on special retreats, and if we did two retreats a year, you could get your hours in.
The operations committee just had on their agenda at, at the last meeting, the possibility of switching the time for the operations committee meeting, and it, and it was unanimously voted down, not having a trouble getting a quorum at operations committee, and that, that's going well. This schedule here, while I think, while I think it's always looked, good to look, to change, and to improve, I couldn't support this schedule, because, one, I know I would have several conflicts off the bat. I put some credence into what, what Jill was saying, and the second, I believe my, my seatmate in District Five would have some conflicts as well, and I don't want to leave District Five without any representation on, on committees. I think if we're having an issue getting a, a quorum at any, any committee meeting, if that's a problem, then the chairs of those committees should just get with whatever individual board members. One thing I've learned is that different board members will have a, something going on in their life at a, at a particular point, and we may not all be aware of it. But it's important to communicate as board members, hey, I noticed you weren't at the meeting, what was going on, to try to facilitate attendance, and that seems to be going well, because everybody can have a, some sort of personal situation that they're trying to, to handle, whether it be death, or illness, or what have you, and we want to be respectful of that, and, and I think we could work through any issues with having a quorum individually and discreetly. Thank you.
Mary?
I tend to agree with Sean. I do not like the times. I think that we tend to go on and on and on and on and on about the different times, and things get mixed up, and quorums are not available for people, and, like you said, you know, other things are going on in our lives, especially this time of year, with other commitments. So I think we just need to look at this again, because if I had to vote tonight on doing this, I would not vote for this schedule. Mr. Chairman.
Anybody else got a discussion? How about if we just do some more steady on it, and we'll come back later with it.
Yeah, I'd be in favor of that. Mr. Chairman, and, and maybe possibly also looking at, like you got finance and H.R. combined, look at some more, maybe committees that would work well together in a, in a combined capacity, that could eliminate some of the, I like the concept, to be very honest with you, I like the concept, and I do believe that we can figure out a way to reduce the amount of times that we need to travel up here, so I'm definitely in favor of going back and trying to take another look at it.
Jill?
I, I don't have a problem with putting two committees on the same day, so that trips up here are reduced, because I know sometimes, you know, you end up coming up here three times a week. I just, my problem is having it, is piggybacking it on board meeting nights. But you could certainly, you can combine them like this, but just pick a different, a different day to do it. Or do it on the off Mondays when we don't have board meetings, maybe.
Okay. All right, we got, we'll take-
Would you like to ask for a couple of volunteers, or appoint some people to maybe work with some of us to come up with some ideas to bring back, or do you?
Does anybody want to volunteer?
I'll do, I mean, I'll help.
Barbara, Sean? Okay. I got two volunteers, there's your two volunteers.
I'd be glad to help.
Got three volunteers. All right, let's move on, Dr. Emery and Heather, on calendar updates.
As the board knows, and I hope most folks know by now, we're extremely grateful to have been granted the four-day waiver that we applied for. We applied back in November, so it's only taken almost six months to, to here. If you look behind page thirty-five, you'll see the calendar, and we talked to you about this at the last meeting, that if we got the waiver, we would be bringing this. Let me tell you the significant changes, and if Heather has items she can share as well. What is different, we took away the late start, late start. That was the thing that provoked the most feedback from parents, concerns about childcare. It was sort of a new idea, originally our idea had been to pair up an early release with a late start, so there are no late starts in this calendar. We do have additional early release days, there are seven of them here, and as you heard earlier from Mr. Feller, between the early release days and the four days that we put back in the calendar, that, that time will be set aside for professional development, and that will be a combination of the P.L.C. need, as well as time for teachers on their own to have time to prepare and, and plan. We have the, the two days in January now that are backed up to the holiday, where prior we only had one, and we have not had to add an illegal day at the end of the school year, like we did in the previous calendar, that we appreciate your great support in stepping outside the box on. Heather, I'll ask if you have other comments or things you'd like to point out to them about this.
It does, I mean, just, to clarify, it does change a couple of the early release days from the previous calendar that was approved. In September, the previous early release day was the twenty-first, and we've moved that to Thursday, the twentieth. And, and, and there, I think there was a concern earlier raised about having an early release day on a Friday, and the perception it gave to the community, so in listening to that, we again moved that to that Thursday. And then in April, we moved the early release day from the eighteenth to the twenty-ninth, and I believe, I'm sure if I'm correct about that, that's to coincide with the end of the marking period there, to be-
Six weeks.
Right, six weeks there, to be more convenient for the teachers. And then we eliminated the early release day in May altogether. So what you have now are six early release days, which keeps it consistent with this school calendar, plus the seventh one that we have extra added, I guess you would say, right there at the beginning of the winter break. So it keeps it consistent with what we're currently doing this school year, the eleven, twelve school year, we currently have six, so we're sticking with that six, plus adding the one early release day, day there at the winter break. And, and the thought process for that is, is that we obviously aren't giving folks a full two weeks at Christmas, in which they're so accustomed to, so since we're backing up the early, the winter break, we are affording them the opportunity for an early release day there.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I move we adopt this calendar for the two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen academic year.
There's a motion for, you got a second? Barbara, second. Any further discussion?
Just a question, but was there any debate, Heather, about having the last day of school, they having to come back on that Monday for the last day of school, and how that would, the logistics as far as it being a worthy day?
Well, when you lay everything down in the calendar, Benji, there isn't really, we don't have the ability to get in the required one-hundred-and-eighty-one days if we were to end on that Friday. And the calendar law says technically we can't go any further than the tenth of June, so that's, I hate to say the way the cards fail, but that's, once we laid everything in that's required by law, that's the way it failed. But Dr. Emery does a really good job each and every year of trying to be sure that our staff are encouraged to make sure those last couple of weeks are as rigorous still as possible for school.
I think you raise a really good point, and I, I'm going to be even more blunt than that. There's always a last day of school, and it really doesn't have a lot of academic integrity, whether, whether it's the Friday, or the Monday, whatever day is going to be the last day of school, we struggle. So I, I think you make a good point, and we may have some people who decide Friday is their last day of school on their own, but officially, this was about the only way we could put those four days back in there and make this work.
And the other thing I would point out is that we're still trying to work, I believe, with the high school principals to determine graduation dates. Because of it falling on a Monday, it doesn't, it creates a little bit of maneuvering there in trying to determine, do you hold graduation, do you wait and hold graduation on that following Saturday and Sun, or Friday and Saturday, so you're making students wait two or three days, or do you try and hold graduations during the course of the week? Or could you even do it the weekend before? So we've got some dialogue going right now with our high school principals, and also with E.C.U. just, we've got to make sure for Mendes Coliseum there that it's available, but we do have some decisions there that need to be made pretty quickly, because I know we've already had some, some feedback from board members that you are hearing from parents that are already trying to plan things for the twelve-thirteen school calendar graduation.
Sean?
I just wanted to pay the, the calendar committee a compliment, this is just a great job. I think they have to keep going back to the drawing board, back to the drawing board, and then we have so many days, and then we have more, and then we have less, and then-
We put in this waiver request on November eighth.
Exactly. I mean, this has just been a great job. You know, to keep coming back and, and accepting feedback, and coming back always with something that, we can't make everyone happy, but always come back with something that really, really works, so that's a great job.
Any further discussion? If not, let's vote.
We're blank.
Oh, we got a blank screen.
Oh, oh, there goes our screen. Oh, oh, there goes our screen.
Okay. Got all, yeses. Okay, this time, I have superintendent's comment.
Just a few brief things. I do want to, um, say that, uh, we started our day today dealing with, uh, a tragedy, and, um, I, I know that our board knows this, but anytime we lose a student or a teacher, um, I'm always so impressed with the hard work of our crisis team. We had folks, um, at Farval Central this morning, the administration there has handled the day just superbly, and, um, administrators and crisis team members there all day. I would ask board members just to keep, uh, their ear to the phone because the situation continues to be difficult and challenging, and I believe there'll be more information that pertains to us as we continue to work through it. And, uh, we need to support our school folks as they deal with what's on the horizon. Uh, we do want to send our condolences to the family, and, um, we know there are students in, in multiple schools in Farval, and, and, um, we, we just, our hearts go out to anybody who has to have a loss, but particularly one that, um, is, is violent in nature. Um, I also want to echo, um, not only the calendar committee's hard work this year, but just to say, um, thank you to parents and to staff for your patience. This is really terribly, terribly late for anybody to be getting a school calendar, um, and we appreciate the understanding that we've had. And again, it changes yet again, and that's really not a local decision, and I would ask people to be sure not, not to fault your board or, or anything, to understand we've been working with a state process that has been woefully inadequate in terms of making a decision that could have been made in November, as, as far as I'm concerned.
So what you're saying is that this is a state mandated thing that it took so long?
The, the waiver, we requested a waiver in November, and we were told we would have a decision in January.
Okay.
And we got a decision two weeks ago on the waiver. So our board went ahead prior to your coming on and adopted a calendar, thinking that we weren't going to get a waiver, and then voila, uh, we have, have waivers, which is good, it's better for everybody concerned to have them, but it's, if I were a parent, you might feel a little bit like, okay, what is the real calendar? Will it please reveal itself to me? It's been a lot of change, so we appreciate the patience.
So the State Department of Public Instruction makes the waiver, or is it the general senior?
Well, at first, it was the state board that was going to officially make the waivers. Then they, um, in March, gave the state superintendent the authority to grant the waivers. And as soon as she got the authority, she quickly began to approve them. So, good, good questions. Um, then finally, I want to just say, uh, very publicly, how much we appreciate our staff. Mr. Feller talked about teacher training, new standards, no raises. It's been a very, very challenging year, um, in classrooms around Pitt County, and, um, this week to spring break is one of the hardest. The, the weeks leading up to spring break are always difficult, and our folks are really doing an awesome job. If you go into classrooms around this district, um, what we see is, is very, uh, very gratifying to see how hard people are working, and they aren't taking the overwhelming nature of all the training and the change that's out there into the classroom with them. And I just want to say how much we appreciate that. We hope everybody has a great spring break, that our students stay safe, um, and that our faculty and staff have a much-needed period of rest so they can come back and help us get to the end of the year with lots of energy and enthusiasm.
Thank you. Uh, my comment basically is that if y'all need some help with this new technology we received tonight, that you are per- perfectly welcome to call either Heather or Tim. So, you know, and they have, have set us some time aside for us to, uh, give us training if you need one-on-one, and me and Raf have done committed that we definitely need help. If, if, and, uh, Jennifer?
I'd just echo the sentiments that were, um, to the families of the, uh, the, of all the people that were, um, killed, I guess, this morning or whenever it was, but, uh, our heartfelt condolences to them, and just getting through a tough time, and thoughts and prayers with those families. And, uh, wish everybody a great spring break, big baseball tournaments this weekend countywide, so a lot of good baseball to come watch if you're out and about.
Barbara?
Prayers and cares to the whole Farval community, particularly the Farval Central High School staff and students, and also the families of those involved.
Mary?
Yes, um, the same thing, um, Barbara just said, my heart's in my, my heart, and goes out to the families. It's just been a difficult time, I guess, for the whole Farval community. My prayers go out to them. Ask the students to be careful, um, during this spring break, and, um, just keep, uh, keep our kids in our county hatched up.
Jill?
I don't need to add anything to that.
Deirdre?
Just like to echo what has been said, and also, I had an opportunity this past weekend to participate in a workshop called Pull Your Pants Up, Young Man, at the Cornerstone Church, and I was one of two female panelists. And, um, so, working with young males on the panel, which was very interesting, and, um, I think the weekend went real well, and, um, so we hope the outcome of that will also help improve in the schools with the boys, um, with the pants, uh, down, of course, and I demonstrated with the belt, that every young, I mean, every male, period, should own a belt and wear it around his waist buckled intact. And I demonstrated it to the audience so that, so they got a kick out of that, but I was serious because, uh, it does not look good, and, um, and the whole emphasis was someone has to say something, and I'm one of those that don't mind speaking out on issues that I feel affect our young people, and I have told a, many young men to do that and so forth. I have not had any, um, negative reaction from them and toward me, so they would just pull them up at least while I'm in the presence, and, so, but I just really think that, you know, we need to do more on that, and the whole negative image that it portrays is, is, uh, serious, and of course, I gave the history of it starting in prison, and how young men don't know, and so all the males on the panel agree that we need to tell them to do it, but use it as a teachable moment, letting them know that, uh, people are watching them, they're, they're, in their, in the community, in the schools, wherever they are, and the people that make decisions in their lives, uh, are the people usually older than they, so they need to be careful because it could affect them in years to come with their careers and all of that. So I thought it was very, very positive, uh, to, uh, see the outcome of the conference, and hopefully that, uh, we can do more of them.
Thank you. Warren?
Uh, just to congratulate Thomas Feller and the rollout of staff development, I mean, really, that was something that was very negative at the very beginning, and it turned out to be, as we see in the survey, something that was positive. And what's going to be very important is the follow-up next year. Uh, second thing is that loss of the student, and I've experienced that as a principal, and especially when it's a violent loss. It's not an accident, it's a violent loss. It impacts your whole school, your whole demeanor of how that school is, and there are some kids that shut down that our counselors really need to keep an eye on, and teachers need to be aware of. Um, I also think it's very important that commissioners need to know the impact of the loss of that low-well, uh, money, and what it would do to our system, and, because there are some programs that are working on what I call skeleton crews, AG, I mean, I just naming that one. I would not be in favor of cutting any AG positions, period, because they are already understaffed. So I just think it's very important that the commissioners know what that impact would be if, uh, we lost low-well funds.
Christine?
Um, I had the privilege of going to the Battle of the Books last Friday, and while one of my children participated in that particular program, so it was kind of dear to me to see that it was still being so successful. But it occurred to me as I sat there that the emphasis is heavily on reading, and that this is a program that goes above and beyond the standard curriculum, and how important it is that we make sure we maintain those programs. And secondly, there was a cartoon in last Friday's paper about a child going home to his parents and saying, "My teacher says you're not to write any more notes to school about anything that you should communicate electronically." I thought about Jennifer, but, but the gist of the cartoon, and while it's very funny, it's tragic, said, you know, "My teacher's of that age where she can't read cursive." And with testing coming up, and we try to keep our programs rigorous, I would encourage the elementary principals and staff to make sure that they teach a few lessons on cursive, because I think it is important that you be able to read anything that you are given, even if it's in cursive. Thank you.
Sean?
I went to a Page meeting on the 27th that emphasized technology for students. I'd like to thank Page for putting that together, and it was held at the Emerge Art Gallery, which was very unique and very, very neat for that presentation. I very much enjoyed seeing Christine at the Battle of the Books on the 30th. It was a great competition with great teamwork, uh, and, and great work and preparation and execution by our staff to make that happen two days in a row. Anybody who says things don't happen in public schools should stop by the Battle of the Books and see what exactly happens in our schools. April is Child Abuse Prevention Month, folks. Uh, please spread that word, that is very important to every, every child and every family in this community. Uh, then I would like to comment on the act of senseless violence that happened last night. And I'd like to take a, a moment to put out to the community to talk to men in particular. I want to talk to young men and fathers in particular. This message goes out to you, because as men, we're missing the boat somewhere in society. I am tired of day after day reading about violent acts in the paper, and they are commonly committed by men, whether they be older men or men between the ages of 15 and 25. So somewhere as men, we are missing the boat. And I would say to young men, if you want to find out what makes you a man, pick up the paper, and you will find out those things that do not make you a man. Cowardly acts like last night, which are pre-planned in nature, do not make you a man. Violence doesn't make you a man. Being incarcerated does not make you a man. Intimidating others does not make you a man. Acting deviant against society does not make you a man. Carrying a gun does not make you a man. Procreating in and of itself does not make you a man. Being a father, having courage and having faith, that makes you a man. I'm here today to tell you that. I think as men, we need to stand up and hold each other accountable and bring an end to these senseless act. And with that, I will say, get to church, folks, and I hope everyone has a very happy and safe Easter. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Major?
Mr. Chair, as everybody else around the table has said, my heart condolences go out to the families of those that were murdered so brutally, and my prayers go out to them as well. Also, just one other note, um, as we continue to struggle through these economically trying times, uh, I continue to be very, very impressed with Michael and the things that he does to, to continue to keep us on the, in, in the black as far as where we are operating from. Our commitment is to continue to do everything that we can do from our, from our end of it, from the finance, um, committee point of view, to make sure that we leave no stone unturned, to show our commitment to the citizens of Pitt County that, um, we're going to do everything we can to find the most economical ways to continue to run these schools, and that's one reason why I really do think, and I appreciate the opportunity that the board has given, the instructions for Michael to go back and to find, um, put together an employee incentive program to find possibly some more cost-saving ways that we can run our system.
Thank you. Raf?
My prayers and condolences and sharing goes out to the families of, uh, those victims that were killed, uh, last night, and, uh, also, I would like to, uh, wish, uh, Pitt County School System, uh, a very good spring break. I wish everybody to come back safely, and wish everybody a happy Easter.
Do you have a motion, John? I got a second. All, all in favor, let's vote. Good night, everybody.